As Chairman of the Hartford Board of Education, I hereby call to order December 20th, 2022, regular meeting. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present and to our television viewers. The Board, Superintendent and I are pleased that you have joined us to celebrate achievement, review information, and make policy decisions related to effective operation of Hartford Public Schools. This is a regular meeting, and all items that will be discussed or voted on this evening have been posted as required by law. As the Hartford Board of Education, we are here to set goals, listen to reports of the Superintendent, approve budgets, contracts, and personnel appointments, and make policy for the district. We are not here to make management decisions or solve the problems of individuals. Management is the responsibility of the Superintendent. The monthly meetings of the Boards are open to the public. There are the time when the Board conducts its business of governing the school system in a public arena. The regular meetings are not meetings with the public. Therefore, comments from the audience will be confined to the time designated for the public to address the Board. Decorm and courtesy are important elements in effective public meetings. Please silence your cell phones or communication devices and refrain from taking and refrain from talking while others are speaking. Since it is legally mandated that proceedings be accurately recorded, I may have to ask for order at times should noise begin to interfere with our recording capabilities. I am pleased that you have taken this time to enjoy it, to join us this evening. We are very proud of the school systems, and thank you for your interest in Hartford Public Schools. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Buenas noches. El presidente de la Junta de Educación de Hartford ha llamado a orden esta reunión ordinaria de la junta del 20 de diciembre de 2022. Damos una cálida bienvenida a todas las personas presentes y a nuestros televidentes. La junta y las superintendentes se complacen que sean unidos a nosotros para celebrar logros, revisar información, y tomar decisiones relacionadas con el funcionamiento efectivo de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Esta es una reunión ordinaria, y todos los asuntos que serán discutidos o votados en esta tarde han sido notificados como lo requiere la ley estatal. Como Junta de Educación de Hartford, estamos aquí para establecer metas, escuchar los informes de la Superintendente, aprobar los presupuestos, contratos, y nombramientos de personal, y establecer normas para el distrito. No estamos aquí para tomar decisiones administrativas o resolver problemas individuales. La administración es la responsabilidad de la Superintendente. Las reuniones mensuales de la junta están abiertas al público. Son el momento en que la junta lleva a cabo su tarea de gobernar el sistema escolar en un espacio público. Las reuniones regulares no son reuniones con el público. Por lo tanto, los comentarios de la audiencia se limitarán al tiempo designado para el público dirigirse a la junta. El decoro y la cortesía son elementos importantes en reuniones públicas eficaces. Por favor, silencie sus teléfonos celulares o dispositivos de comunicación y absténganse de hablar mientras otros están hablando. Ya que es mandato legal de que los procedimientos sean grabados con precisión, es posible que tengamos que pedir orden periódicamente si el ruido interfiere con nuestras capacidades de grabación. Nos complace que se haya tomado el tiempo esta tarde para unirse a nosotros. Estamos muy orgullosos de este sistema escolar y les damos gracias por su interés en las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Y si alguien aquí necesita traducción en español, la señorita Alba está aquí y levanta las manos.
We will begin this evening's meeting with some fall athletic celebrations. Superintendent?
Good evening, everyone. As we continue to celebrate the greatness that we have in Hartford Public Schools, providing our students with robust engaging athletic programs is a key component of our strategic plan, specifically as part of our priority two, establishing and sustaining a welcoming culture and nurturing climate. We know that when our young people have an opportunity to compete with and play alongside peers, they are more likely to succeed not only in the classroom but also develop critical skills that will prepare them for college and beyond. So we'd like to take this moment to celebrate some of our incredible athletes that excelled on the athletic field and our digital sports arena. So let's begin. I think I have a great. University High School Science of Engineering are the esports state champions, champions. Their League of Legends team coached by Andy Eaton and Dennis Obi defeated number four Farmington High School in the state semifinals and then beat number two Sinsbury to win the state championship at Quinnipiac University. I have seen this team in action, and I so admire their enthusiasm, their commitment, and shout out to Principal Tominey because I remember during the pandemic, I went to visit the school, and he was talking about ways to ensure, to get at innovative ways to further engage our students. And then he visioned out a broader event, a broader competition, and here we are. So we look forward to even more to come. We are also proud to say that we have several athletes that earn all-state recognition. Abigail Lee, a senior from Sports and Medical Sciences Academy, is a setter on the volleyball team and earned Class S All-State Distinction and is second all-time in SMSA history for assists. Jason Batallanos is a sophomore on the Buckley Soccer Team, is a member of the All-State Class M Team, and serves as the team captain for our Bulldogs, and won regular season and conference tournament titles. Congratulations to you, Jason. Mackenzie Simpson, senior at SMSA Soccer Team, earned Class S All-State Honors and scored 94 goals throughout her career. Fifty-seven, fifty-seven of those goals came in during her senior year. Shout out to you. Merdan Koldansik, a member of the Hartford Magnet Trinity College Academy Soccer Team, earned Class S All-State Honors, just a sophomore, and achieved all of that. Congratulations. Elijah Perry, senior on the Hartford High Football Team, earned Class M All-State Honors and is a standout defensive player. Tamir Gamble, an HMTCA student and member of the SMSA Co-op Football Team, earned Class M at the state honors and is also a defensive back for the team that went undefeated in the regular season. Congratulations. Daniel Hernandez, an SMSA student and quarterback also for the Co-op Football Team, was honored as a member of the All-State Elite Team, which recognized the top 26 players in the state. He also earned the P-Quot Conference Overall Player of the Year honors and is a Connecticut Gatorade Player of the Year nominee. And finally, I also want to recognize the SMSA Co-op Football Team that made up, is made up of students from Buckley, Classical, HMTCA, and University High for their undefeated season, a first in program history. Coach Quinn, congratulations on your incredible success on the field for earning the P-Quot Conference. Because Coach Quinn earned the P-Quot Conference Coach of the Year Award and for developing incredible team chemistry and friendship among our young athletes. I know it's not an easy task when they come from four different schools, four different communities, so we're very proud of what you were able to accomplish. And to all of our athletes, our coaches, our families, our friends who showed up for the games, team dinners, and made the fall season a success, we appreciate your effort and know that it's so important when we show up for our students. And so you represent our schools so, so well, and we are so proud of you.
If you guys would all step on the stage, the stairs over there.
Again, congratulations to all our student athletes. We will now move on to public comment. Ms. Oliver?
We, as the Board, in collaboration with the Superintendent and District Leadership, are committed to cultivating a culture of excellence at all levels of HPS. We thank you for taking the time to attend tonight's Board Meeting. We appreciate you coming out to learn more about Hartford Public Schools and for sharing your thoughts and concerns. We have established a protocol to track and respond to concerns raised. We want you to know that we take your concerns seriously, and to that end, staff will follow up within 48 hours if follow-up is required via the preferred method of contact the speaker has indicated on the sign-in sheet. We will follow this no-contact method of follow-up for the time being adhering to safety protocols. As a reminder, you have three minutes to speak at the two-minute mark. The bell will ring letting you know you have one minute left. At the second bell, please wrap up your comments. Now this will be read in Spanish.
Nosotros, la Junta de Educación, en colaboración con la Superintendente y personal del distrito, estamos comprometidos a cultivar una cultura de excelencia en todos los niveles de las escuelas públicas de Hartford. Les agradecemos se haya tomado el tiempo para asistir a la reunión de la junta esta noche. Les agradecemos su participación y su deseo de aprender más sobre las escuelas públicas de Hartford y también por compartir sus pensamientos y preocupaciones. Nosotros tomamos sus preocupaciones muy seriamente y hemos establecido un protocolo para el seguimiento y respuesta a inquietudes planteadas. Personal hará un seguimiento dentro de las 48 horas si es necesario, a través del método de contacto preferido que el orador haya indicado en la hoja de registro. Seguiremos este método de seguimiento sin contacto por el momento, adhiriéndonos a los protocolos de seguridad. Esa persona investigará su caso y comunicará con usted dentro de 48 horas. Les recordamos que tienen tres minutos para hablar. Cuando han pasado dos minutos, el timbre sonará, dejándole saber que le queda un minuto. Al segundo sonido, por favor, termine sus comentarios. And our first speaker is Michael Downs.
Good evening, Board members. My name is Michael Downs, 74 Rosemont Street in Hartford, Connecticut. And I just wanted to speak briefly on school safety and student safety. If the, certainly that's a top priority for us. And if the situation warrants it, all doors should be locked. Those with keys should make sure those doors are locked. But substitute teachers who do not have keys cannot be responsible for the locking of the doors. And I understand that there's some, there's some agreements going around, that, security agreements that are, substitute teachers are asked to sign. And it states that they will make sure that the doors are locked. Without a key, you can't make sure the door is locked. So that leaves the substitute teachers, if they sign that, they are open to liability. So that security agreement should be rewritten for substitute teachers. Thank you.
Martin Edgar?
Hello, my name is, ladies and gentlemen of the Board, Dr. Rodriguez. My name is Martin Edgar of Union Local 1018E, the Hartford Federation of Substitute Teachers on 85 Buckingham Street. I'm here this evening to ask the Board and its legal counsel to stop forcing our substitute teachers from signing a security agreement, and that's enclosed with you, at Buckley High School, which contains language in part that we must lock our classrooms during code yellows and reds. Officials at the school told us if we did not sign the document, we couldn't work at their school anymore. How can we lock our school classrooms if we are never given keys to the classroom in the first place? I worked in this school district for many years, and I have never been presented with such a side letter or ultimatum. Any security issue should be discussed with our union president and the Board's legal counsel prior to their issuance, not just throwing at us when we enter a school. As it is, we have mandates from the school district to have mandatory testing every year, a bachelor's degree demanded by the state, a pandemic that is still in progress, low wages, no pension, or full-time benefits for full-time work, and now having to lock our doors in a school crisis without keys. This side letter I received is not worth the paper it was written on. It just makes substitute teachers more legally liable and culpable if we have a catastrophic red code in our school. As a result of this, I have enclosed a Hartford Current article to Board Members about Lauren Rousseau, the substitute teacher killed in Newtown 10 years ago. In the report, it stated that Ms. Rousseau had no keys to lock her classroom, and the result was fatal. All students were killed in her classroom along with Ms. Rousseau by the gunman who was able to get into her unlocked classroom. The killing at Sandy Hook led to litigation between the Newtown Board of Education and parents in the school district for failure of the school to give Ms. Rousseau the keys she needed to protect her room and students. It is time to do something about school security, but not make substitute teachers a legal scapegoat for the problem. This security letter issued by the Board should be abrogated as it is presently written, and no substitute teacher should have to sign it in its current language. If the Board can't give our sub-teachers keys every day to protect our classes, then the school district has no business imposing legal mandates on us we simply can't fulfill. As Winston Churchill once said, "Those who fail to learn from history are doomed to repeat it." We don't want another Sandy Hook because we did not have the means to protect our classrooms. Thank you and good evening.
Daniel Myers-Frierson?
Good evening, Board. I'm going to take a deep breath because I'm just overwhelmed, but I'm happy to be here and I thank you guys for allowing me the moment to speak. I am Danielle Myers-Frierson. I am from the north end of Hartford. I went to Annie Fisher Fox Middle, and I graduated from Beaver High School and the Greater Hartford Academy of the Arts, all of which prepared me to matriculate at institutions of higher learning and go on to receive advanced certificates and degrees from Clark Atlanta University and New York University. Therefore, I know that Hartford is capable of providing not only quality but also a well-rounded education to its students. Unfortunately, I am here today to talk to you about an incident involving my own children who currently attend Hartford, Hartford School. The issue is that they were both being bullied and sexually harassed. I am hurt and mortified with the lack of empathy, action, and accountability as it relates to the equitable resolution of this issue. While I realize you cannot respond at this moment, it is my hope that at the end of this meeting, someone will provide support to resolve the issues, not only from my own, as it relates to my own children, but for the children that do not have an advocate. I am trying not to lose faith in the city that raised me or the system that helped to cultivate my growth, but it's becoming very difficult to continue to dismiss the negligence of the adults that were involved, and this is my last attempt in seeking restorative justice. Thank you. I know that Hartford is an amazing place. I know that we're all dealing with a lot, but even as I entered into the upstairs area where I used to enter every day as a high school student and have to get searched, I see that that no longer has to happen. I saw students outside that go here, and they told me that their teachers care here. They told me that it's a good place, the work is rigorous as it should be, and that they have the support. So again, I thank Principal Webly, and I thank you all for your dedication, and I hope that this matter is rectified in a way that is restorative. Thank you.
Patricia Mack?
Hello, my name is Patricia Jones-Mack, and I am a member of the Carrie Saxon Perry mural at Sands Committee. On October 18th, 2022, our project manager, Levy Cordulis, for the Carrie Saxon Perry Project at Sands, spoke to the Board of Ed. He reported that we had poor customer service from Sands School in starting the board process of the mural. Two thousand, $21,890 was received by St. Sands School in July of 2022 from the City of Hartford's Love My Block Grant. The project was supposed to begin in the summer, and it was designed to revitalize the South Arsenal neighborhood in honor Carrie Saxon Perry, our first African-American female mayor of Hartford. Where is the money? What is streamlined process to get access to the accounts for the $21,000? Bills are starting to accumulate, and we would like to break ground this April. The city has requested that we have insurance for the outside mural. We have provided physical copy of the budget again for the project. We would like to order the materials to get and give our professional artists a portion of the payment to begin. It will be vital for the Carrie Saxon Perry mural project to receive funding in a timely fashion. Vendors have been paid, will be paid, and the planning for the mural reveals ceremonies need to start sooner than later. We would like to be pro, we would like a proactive liaison from the school to assist in implementing the project to help with any unforeseen issues. We have commissioned two internationally known artists, Alice Etcheverry and Andre Rochester. Many of their works have been produced all over the city of Hartford. In addition, students from Trinity College partnered with fourth-grade teachers, teacher Desiree Primus, the organizer for the project. These college students present information about Carrie Saxon Perry's life. Perry grew up in Sands neighborhood. In conclusion, members of the Carrie Saxon Perry family and media, the Hartford community beyond, see Carrie Saxon Perry mural project as being a reality with compliance to the Love My Grant. Please contact the project manager or myself within the 48-hour time period. This has not happened as of yet. In the spirit of love and Christmas and the committee, we would like to leave the Board of Ed with this message for the 2002-2003 school year, 2022-2023 school year. Show us the money. Where is the money? We need the money.
Ruth Cullen?
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Ruth Cullen. I am the Executive Director of the Connecticut Forum. I believe I'm the next item on the agenda and to discuss a proposal with the Sport and Medical Sciences Academy.
Sorry, I think you signed the republic comment inadvertently.
I think I did. Okay, thank you.
Carol Gill?
Good evening. A new report from the Economic Policy Institute confirms that the teacher shortage has been exacerbated by the ongoing COVID-19 pandemic. The report found that, quote, "A lack of sufficient qualified teachers reduces teachers' effectiveness and threatens students' ability to learn, undermining the education system's ability to provide a sound education equitably to..." ability to provide a sound education equitably to all children." Last month, the CEA announced results of a survey that they took of educators from around the state, and when asked when, whether public schools were going in the right direction or the wrong track, 61% of respondents said the wrong track. When asked about job satisfaction, 72% responded dissatisfied. These statistics and many more from the CEA survey actually match the data from the HFT survey that we conducted last spring and presented to you as well. Additionally, similarly to both, the top proposals to remedy the situation include things such as competitive salaries, fully staffing schools, reducing non-teaching duties and paperwork, and increasing planning and prep time with adequate support. The biggest alarm raised from the CEA survey is that 74% of educators expressed that they are likely to leave the profession and that the district's hardest hit are the urban districts such as Hartford. This certainly concurs with the experience in Hartford where educators are in fact resigning and doing so in the middle of the school year, which is happening in far greater numbers than has occurred in the past. Certainly proactive steps must be taken now to ensure that Hartford Public Schools retains the staff needed to continue to deliver quality education to our students. HFT certainly stands ready to engage in that work with you. This morning, Hartford Public Schools announced the Caribbean Connection Program, which is the second creative solution to recruiting new staff to Hartford Public Schools, the first being the Paso a Paso program. HFT encouraged the district in this exploration with other West Indian countries from the very first time that we learned of the Paso a Paso program. And our Vice Presidents Stuart Beckford and Corey Moses have met several times with district leaders in the development of the Caribbean Connection Program. We are very pleased to see the positive response already. As positive as this new program is, we also know that it is only one piece of the solution. Retention continues to be a major barrier in Hartford Public Schools. A salary comparison of districts in Greater Hartford shows that the top salary for a teacher with a master's degree in Hartford is a little over $89,000 and ranks 29 out of 29 districts. The district ranking number one compensates a teacher with a master's degree at almost $104,000. That is a $15,000 difference. Moreover, Hartford has the longest instructional day of all of these towns and is the only district with an instructional day that is over seven hours long. That means, quite simply, that Hartford teachers work more for much less. This is a recipe for the unfortunate crisis being predicted by the CEA and the Economic Policy Institute referenced above. So the time to act is absolutely now. I ask that we please extend an opportunity to meet, to discuss ways to compensate employees more, to reduce their workload, and to provide the necessary supports that will entice our staff to stay. Thank you and happy holidays.
Regina Chambers?
Hello. I'm a resident of Hartford. I have a daughter that attends Prince Tech High School. It was an incident last week in regards of discrimination of her sexual preference coming from one of the educators or one of the staff members. I, when she informed me, I was stuck and hurt. I wanted to comfort her, but I guess I educated her and showed her how to advocate for herself because by the time I attempted to call the board, the board was already called, and she filed a formal Title IX. She was addressed as he, she, them, in a joking way, and made a mockery in front of the students. I called the school and let them know that this is, this cannot be tolerated. But this is just one incident. Speaking to my daughter, she said, "What do you think, Ma? Do you think they really care? Had I been in another school system, you know, it would be handled differently." But again, we don't have the same treatment, and I see that, I know that, working myself. So how do we, how do we make change and how do we stop this? We cannot make it light. I don't think I have to, and my sister, my daughter told me she's going to take it. She's going to handle this, she's going to take her foot, and she want me to fall back, but I'm giving her the support. But this can't continue. We already know that it's a domino effect. If the kid don't feel good, the teacher's not going to feel good because it all is one, it all is encompassed of one. So how do we make this, this a real issue? Because we see this more and more, and it's more prevalent in the, in the city with our children discovering their, their identity. And I just want, I want this board to know that, you know, I wanted to bring that forth because I don't know, I probably would not be here if this did not happen. But what can we do together collectively to make change?
And I believe this was left on the list by mistake, but is John Walton here? I don't see him, no. So then that concludes public comment.
We now move on to the report of the chair. Several members of the Board of Education, excuse me, several members of the Board of Education attended the Connecticut Associate, the Connecticut Association of Boards of Education slash Public Schools Superintendent's Conference slash Convention on November 18th and 19th. The CAPE and CAPS Convention provides Connecticut Board of Education members and superintendents the opportunity to acquire knowledge through general sessions and workshops that can help prepare students to be more successful. Members that attended were Board Member A.J. Johnson, Shontay Brody, Francois Ledger, and Tyrone Walker. Additionally, Board Member Francois Ledger was appointed to the State Relations Committee for CAPE. A highlight of the convention was a drum line from our own Noah Webster School performing for the conference attendees. Board Member Ledger also attended the First Book Event, which was held at MLK School on December 15th, on December 10th. She was also a guest speaker for the Teacher Leader Program Candidates. They discussed the importance of representation and bringing your gifts and talents to the table. Board Members Johnson and Walker also attended the Greater Hartford Interfaith Action Alliance on December 7th, held here at Weaver High School, where one of the themes were education equity. The Greater Hartford Interfaith Action Alliance embodies the power over, of over 50 interfaith congregations to make change for justice in our communities, regions, and state. As always, I will continue to remind every board meeting that you could find the full committee reports as well as all attachments and videos in the meeting agenda on Board Docs. As a reminder, all committee and workshop meetings are live streamed as well as viewable after the meeting. The YouTube links are saved in each meeting agenda on Board Docs. I encourage the community to view the meetings and read the reports when possible. If you have any questions, please contact Christina Santiago, our Board Liaison, at As this year comes to a close, I want to, I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone for their hard work and dedication to Hartford Public Schools. I have seen firsthand your passion, commitment to the betterment of our education for our students, the climate for our staff, and the support for our families. Thank you to my fellow board members, all HPS staff and teachers, the community, and the families. I wish everyone a safe, restful, and happy holidays. We now move to the report of the superintendent.
Thank you, Chairman. I have three items in my report and also a reminder that the full report can be accessed via Board Docs. So if I can check in on the display, I'll start with, one, a reminder for our community and staff to, you can access our data dashboards on our website. And as we continue to focus on our efforts to engage our students and ensure that they are not only academically, but also social and emotionally supported. Do a quick, there we go, quick visual here as to where we currently stand with regard to our chronic absenteeism, right, 10%, missing 10% or more of the school year. And so as a comparison to last year, we are trending in the right direction. So our chronic absenteeism is lower across all grades. Currently, we are at 36.7% chronic absenteeism as compared to last year, almost at 41%. We are very mindful of the increasing number of not only COVID cases, but upper respiratory illness, and will continue to monitor that, monitor that especially as we go into the, into the break and welcome everyone back. Want to just shout out, well, first, across all of our schools, our hard work that all of our ACE Attendance Culture and Climate and Engagement teams are doing, but highlighting the work that's happening across some of our high schools. I know that Weaver High School, for example, is focusing on home visits to our Tier Two students, and at Buckley, there's a strong focus on piloting the Student Disengagement Protocol, and they've completed several interviews with students and families, and that is connected to our multi-tiered system of supports and their plan to continue to reengage some of our students that did not meet success last year. And so we continue to support students via those wraparound supports. Again, a reminder to our community that you can access our, our data dashboards on our website. In, in our public comment, we heard reference to our Caribbean Connections, and I want to highlight that we are hiring teachers from the Caribbean Islands, participants from the Caribbean Connection Teacher Recruitment Program. We are looking to fill 15 vacant positions for the 23, 24 school year in elementary, English, math, science, music, and art. This is working directly with the International Alliance Group. The district is recruiting teacher candidates to be screened for the J-1 visa eligibility. The candidates are going to be screened on a rolling basis. I know that the first event that was held virtually had, I believe, over 150, a group of 150, and we have two other events that are coming up. And, and I just want to reference the hard work that has gone into our recruitment efforts. Yes, you know, Paso a Paso, we know that that has been a success, but this work actually started, the vision for all of this was back in 2019, and want to highlight the support that we continue to receive from Travelers Foundation when, you know, back in 2019, I shared the initial vision with Erin Haberman at Travelers and said, you know, it's not just local talent that we want to recruit, it's also national, isn't Puerto Rico, and it's going to be international. And so back in 2019, she said, yep, we're on it, we're going to fully support, and they're still walking side by side with us. And so external support, internally, cross-departmental support and, and collaboration, our engagement department, our, our academic team, and our talent team. And so we're going to continue to not only support the teachers that we recruit, but also the commu, the school communities. We know that hiring and recruiting and bringing them on is one thing, but it requires a, a system of support and conditions to be in play at all of the schools. And so want to extend gratitude to our administrators and our teachers because, right, it is the peers and the support that our newcomer teachers receive when they're with us. And so we're going to continue to do this work in partnership, as we heard, you know, referenced by HFT leadership, and most importantly is making sure that our, that our educators also reflect our students and our communities. Lastly, to end my report, I do want to just spend a minute to extend gratitude and, and farewell to our Chief of Schools, Yvette Avila. Some of you might know she is leaving our Hartford Public Schools to her new role as Superintendent of Valley Central School District in New York. She has been an invaluable member of our team, helping lead an incredible group of, of principals and thought leaders, and as I reflect on the work that we, we did collaboratively, COVID-19 safety efforts and trying to reignite the student engagement and attendance efforts, she has been at the center of that work. So I'm excited and proud for her new adventure, and we're going to deeply miss Chief Avila and her support. And Chief Avila, if you are here extending, she has to step, oh, to speak for the parent. So, thank you, Chief Avila. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Superintendent. We now move on to the business agenda. Business Agenda Item 3.1, apologies, 4.1, Approval of the Minutes. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education approve the Minutes of November 15th, 2022 meeting. Do I have a motion? Second?
Second.
Any questions, discussions? All those of favor signify by saying aye. Nays, abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves. Item 4.2, Administrative Appointment, Paul Foster. Motion that Hartford Board of Education approve the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Paul Foster to the position of Deputy Superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Just a, a little overview of, of Mr. Foster, who has served as a senior leader and member of the superintendent's cabinet in Springfield Public Schools for 12 years. As the Chief of Strategy, Innovation, and Accountability, he is responsible for the leadership and management of community-driven strategic planning, instructional innovation, progress and performance management, technology, digital learning, and assessment. Mr. Foster's proudest accomplishment in Springfield include designing and leading a community engagement process that involved several thousand stakeholders in the development implementation of Springfield's Portrait of a Graduate and a community-driven strategic plan. The portrait and six-year strategic plan focus on reimagining teaching and learning to ensure that all students are empowered to identify and achieve their dreams. In addition, Mr. Foster has led the 2015 implementation of one-to-one computing for 21, 24,000 students, expanded the availability and use of data and predictive analytics, launched Springfield's Computer Science for All Initiative, and created a community data warehouse to share data with youth servant, serving organizations. Prior to Springfield Public Schools, his professional experience focused on the use of data and analytics for decision-making and performance management in the public sector. This experience included five years as a senior planner with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, a time also as an analyst with the Massachusetts Budget and Policy Center, and several years as the founding director of the City of Springfield's City Stat Performance Management Programs. Mr. Foster has a Bachelor of Arts in History and African-American Studies from Harvard University, and a Master's in Social Policy from Brandeis University. He and his wife live in Springfield, Mass, and are the proud parents of two college students and one precocious fifth grader as well.
Thank you. Mr. Foster, thank you for coming up. Before I turn to my colleagues for questions or comments, I want to give you a couple of minutes to see if you, anything that you want to share with the, with the board and with the audience today.
Thank you so much for having me. It's an honor and a privilege to have this opportunity to be before you and to have the opportunity to join the team at Hartford. And I'll just say, you know, I'll just reflect that I think when I first became interested in the possibility of joining the team in the Hartford Public Schools, it was actually through attending a webinar with a funder and Hartford's work with the a webinar with a funder. And Hartford's work with the district model for excellence and the instructional vision was being showcased, and it really caught my attention. And as I researched more, I just became more and more interested in the exciting work that's happening in this district, as well as the team that's leading this district. And that really led me to pursuing this opportunity, and it's really an honor to be at this point of standing before you and, and having this opportunity to be part of the exciting work that's happening here.
Thank you. Looking to my colleagues to see if there's any questions or comments. Board Member Walker.
Hi, Mr. Foster. I've read your resume, and it's impressive. I'm impressed what you have achieved. I have some questions. One, it, it appears you've never worked as a teacher. And additionally, no education degree or, okay. So your, your job with the district in Springfield's been like an internal consultant, program creator, implementer for the, in Springfield?
Yes. So, so I appreciate the question. I think my role in Springfield has really evolved over the, over my tenure there, and that had a lot to do with, I, I would, I guess, say my time listening and, and being mindful of what I was learning from the people around me and my partnership with colleagues. So my role in Springfield did involve certainly a lot of, of work around implementation, program management, performance management, project management. But over, over my tenure, you know, when I first started in Springfield, I came into the district as the Chief Information Officer with responsibility for technology, research, data, and accountability. And what, what happened is my role evolved to involve much more and more instructional leadership. And that was really through, it started through the, excuse me, it started through the avenue of technology, because technology was becoming more and more important to what was happening in classrooms. And as I became more involved in instructional leadership, that meant partnering really closely with educators and with principals, listening to them, hearing them, and really collaborating and decision-making around instructional innovation and instructional change. And so I know the superintendent shared, you know, my leadership around the process of reimagining learning. And that's been convening, coordinating, collaborating, and listening, and then working collaboratively together with others, including educators, school leaders, to make decisions in the interest of children. I hope that answered, but just in terms of speaking, that sort of my role evolved as I spent more and more time partnering and collaborating with educators and principals in the district.
Go ahead.
Yes. So, yeah, so one, I think your, your skills would be valued here. One of the issues, though, has been, we have over 1,500 teachers here. They don't see themselves reflected in, in leadership, and they don't feel like they're heard or understood a lot. So, I mean, how, how have you bridged that gap? I mean, how, how have you done that in your role at Springfield?
I'll be honest and say, it, it, it wasn't instantaneous for me in Springfield, right? Because I didn't have that background as an educator. People had to get to know me, and I had to spend time listening, and I had to spend time with people, hearing their concerns, and then making sure that those concerns were represented in the work that I brought forward in the district. And I think what, what happened is, over time, I earned the trust of the educators in Springfield schools. And I think, you know, well, I'm going to be presumptuous a little bit and say that I think that the educators in Springfield and our principals in Springfield would say they see me as an educational instructional leader. But again, that took time. And so I think in, in transitioning into the role here, it will take time for me to earn the trust and, and demonstrate that I have both knowledge and experience, but also the willingness to listen. And not just listen, but make sure that the voices I've heard are reflected in the decision-making.
Okay. Thank you.
Does any other board members have questions or comments? Board Member Brody.
Good evening. If you are afforded this position, would you become a Connecticut resident? Or you're going to remain a Massachusetts resident?
I think I'm not 100% sure on that yet. I will be honest and say that I have a fifth grader who's enrolled in the Springfield Public Schools at this time. So that's a conversation I have to certainly have with my wife and, and something we have to process together.
I have a second question. I think Mr. Walker expressed some of my concerns. But so this question is not necessarily for you, maybe for the superintendent. The, this, this position is next in line to you. Is that correct?
This position would have oversight of operations, closely work with finance, data and accountability, and strategic initiatives.
Okay. So what would be the, so in your absence, if you needed to take an absence for whatever reason, who would run Hartford Public Schools?
The operational, the operations of the district could either be the deputy or anyone on the, on the cabinet.
Thank you.
Board Member Johnson.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Foster. How are you?
Good. How are you?
I appreciate your, your resume and everything that you have just offered education, period. And for me, Hartford, Hartford Public Schools is in an interesting position, and I think it's going to take creative people. We have wonderful staff here that deal with a variety of different things on a anytime, you know, anytime, any place there's something happening that needs to be resolved or taken care of. Can you just speak to your, your ability to have a task, but to also be thrown other tasks that take priority over the task that you're presently working on? And how, how do you navigate through that and keep a level head and communicate effectively?
Thanks for the question. I, I think it is very much as you indicated, it's about prioritization, and there will always be things that are pressing, and you always have to balance the urgent and the important. And I would say, in my experience, in my tenure in Springfield, certainly the last two years have taught us a lot about balancing the urgent and the important. And so in my role in Springfield, I was leading our Portrait of a Graduate and Community-Based Strategic Planning effort when COVID started. And obviously, that involved making some hard choices about which pieces of the Portrait of a Graduate and Strategic Planning work could continue at the same pace, and which needed to take a pause, because we had other more urgent work around, which also important work, that needed to take place around keeping students and staff safe in the midst of a pandemic, making sure that instruction continued. And so I would give that as an example of, you know, making some choices to pull back from some of the work that was already underway on the strategic plan and pausing some of that in order to make space. And so I think they're never easy decisions, but I think it's making those kinds of decisions. And I think doing that in consultation with others is very important.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As a follow-up question, can you just summarize, can you summarize what you think a day-to-day would be in this position as Deputy Superintendent? Just, just 30 seconds, walk, walk me through some of the stuff that you think you'll be working on and doing.
Sure. I, you know, I guess we'll find out, but, but I can tell you what I think it's going to look like. And I think that's going to be likely connecting with the superintendent, probably briefly, and just hearing what her priorities are and what she's thinking about. I think it'll involve a lot of interaction with members of the cabinet, with the chiefs. And, you know, as we move the district model for excellence forward, the chiefs have their responsibilities relative to each of the priorities in the district model for excellence. And so I, I see partly my role connecting the dots between those different work streams of the model for excellence and between the work that the different chiefs are doing. So I imagine that's meetings with individual chiefs as well as meetings with teams. And then I think also connecting with educators and school leaders during part of that day. So I'm not giving you a, a great, like, this is what happens at eight and this is what happens at nine. But I think certainly, it's, it's always been very important to me, the district, decisions being made at the district level are informed by what's happening at the building level. And so even in those conversations with chiefs, where we might be talking about moving a particular work stream forward within the district model for excellence, making sure we're hearing from school leaders and educators around that work as well.
Thank you.
Board Member Oliver.
Hello and, and welcome. Thank you for coming this evening, and congratulations on your, on success that you've had in Springfield. Excited to, to see you and hear from you, seeing your background in data and accountability, knowing how important that's been to Superintendent and the work that she's done in our district to really change the way we work and do things. And one of the things that I'm interested in is making sure that the superintendent has the backup and support to be able to do basically the CEO work of the district. We talk a lot about collaboration and engagement, which I see are powerful things in your background, and wanting to make sure that, that she's able to do that. Even the transition plan, and I shared this with the superintendent, she still has a couple of things still going directly into her. I'm hoping that you all will work that through, because quite frankly, she's still responsible for the entire district. So I think having someone who's able to play that leadership role as deputy is critically important. The other thing I'll, I'll quickly just mention, I know, as some of my colleagues mentioned, the, the teacher background piece. That's not my biggest concern. I'm actually pretty proud of the academic rigor and instructional leadership we have here at Hartford Public School, led not just by the superintendent but others, including Chief Negron. So I think working in partnership with her and others in the cabinet, that'll work itself out. So my question, that was really long, but my question is, knowing, again, Springfield-Hartford, we're kind of the same region, you've been hearing about Hartford for a while, you mentioned the webinar, you mentioned the DME. When you think about this move, even talked about trust before with colleagues and teachers, et cetera, what do you think is going to be the biggest challenge as, as you move into this new position?
I think I would say two things. Certainly, crossing state lines is, is not trivial, right? We all operate under the same federal education laws, but, you know, different testings environment, different set of accountability, programming and standards at the state level. That's one. And the other is what we already talked about. So folks in Springfield know me, and they know that, that my sort of deep love for, for transforming instruction and, and transforming education on behalf of kids. But I think what we already talked about, that work of building trust in a new, in a new context where people don't know me. And I would say that's the second biggest challenge.
Great. Thank you.
Dr. Schmerle.
I think you have a very impressive background, and it can be an asset to the, the school system. Actually, my questions are for you. They're for clarification from the superintendent. My, my colleagues have asked some, I think, great questions, and it's prompted a question in my own mind. In terms of the job description, is having educational experience part of the job description?
It is not a requirement for this job description.
And then secondly, is it a requirement that the, a deputy superintendent would be a resident of the state?
It is not a requirement for this position. The only residency requirement is for the superintendent.
And do we have teachers who are living in Springfield that commute in?
We do have teachers and members at central office as well. Yes.
I mean, that may be an asset that you could empathize with those teachers who are commuting at longer distance to commit to the Hartford School System. But I, I think these are not , that was, I just want to be sure that we're still consistent with, with the job description, that that's not an impediment. Thank you.
Board Member Walker.
Thank you. Then I guess I'm directing to the superintendent as well. I, I didn't understand the job description enough, because a deputy superintendent seems like a person who is one heartbeat away from being the superintendent. And currently, there's perception at the top that is not, you know, deep teaching experience. And so my concern is, and the question is, I totally get that his role is very valuable and will totally help you in what you're doing. I'm just saying, how did you balance that, that you'd have a deputy, so the two folks at the top of the, the school district collectively won't have much teaching experience? What does that convey to the district? Like, what, help me understand, is this a role that's deputy but not going to have any educational leadership?
So, I hear your question, and I'm only going to address the question with regard to Mr. Foster, given that I'm not the one that is being appointed and is on the agenda. And so, as I referenced before, the oversight will be around performance, operations, finance, and strategic initiatives. And we have other members on our team that have the qualifications and the certifications that are necessary for any instructional leadership supervision. Mr. Foster also has the necessary certifications in, I believe it's O-92. It is in the process of obtaining the O-93, as per, given by the State of Connecticut.
Follow-up question. Now, the reported salary here is $195. That salary, at least as reported, is more than average salary of superintendents in the State of Connecticut. Is there a reason that the salary needs to be at, at that rate?
That is the salary range for that position in Hartford Public Schools.
Okay. Thank you.
Board Member Brody, I believe you had a follow-up question?
So to help me, because we, we had a deputy superintendent, and we understood what that was. Now the position has resurfaced, because it's not like it stayed vacant. So it went somewhere and now is back. But it is very different, is a very different description that's, that's coming forth. So I am, when I hear deputy superintendent, that means is the superintendent and then is the deputy superintendent. But what I'm hearing is there's no, like, the rest of the staff is, is not the staff, and then the next is the deputy, and then you're after that. Is it, is no, is going to be no reporting? No one's reporting to him in that managerial aspect? Like, I don't fully understand, because if, if we needed someone to do all the things that you listed, I don't understand. To me, deputy superintendent do not fit that role. So that is a disconnect for me. So does staff not report to the deputy superintendent, like your cabinet or any department leaders? If you could help me understand that.
So I heard several questions. I'll address the first one with regard to the deputy superintendent going away, or the, the position going away. The position has never gone away. We actually are fortunate that Traveler's Foundation funded the national, the national search for this position. So I've, we've gone almost three years now without filling the, the position. And with regard to the, the role, in this case, if approved, Mr. Foster would have oversight of the entire district, what he will not do is evaluate anyone that has a, that has a certification in education in terms of instruction. And so there are others in our district that can support with that.
So does, so do people report to him or they don't?
Yes. With regard to daily oversight of the district, yes.
And many of those reporting to him are, to Mr. Walker's point, leading or in charge of folks that are instructional leaders. And we've determined here tonight, based on resume, that that is not his experience. But those who it is their experience and they're leading in our district in that way, they're reporting to this position.
They are reporting to a position that is responsible for supporting the implementation of our strategies, yes.
And Mr. Chair, this will be my last comment, I promise. So it is very important to those who are, who work for Hartford Public Schools, right? When you are being, when you have a superior, you're looking for at least that superiority to, if not have walked in your shoes, to have the experience, to have that background, because they are, you're saying not evaluate, but reporting too is, that's a big thing too. So we have, at the top of our district, we will have two individuals if appointed tonight that don't have that experience of in the classroom, of knowing what it is to teach, because essentially the teaching part of our district is the most critical, essential part of what we do. They're delivering instruction to our students. So I'm just painting the picture for what teachers, coaches, principals, all of them, all, that, they're going to have those two leaders if this vote goes in favor of the candidate, of someone who does not have that classroom experience and the perception definitely will be, you don't know, you've never done what I've done, but you're at the top, leading. And that's all I have.
Mr. Chair.
Board Member Schmerle.
I can just comment about that. If that were the case, I would not have my job. I'm running a hospital with physicians and nurses and all kinds of professionals licensed. I've never taken care of a patient. You surround yourself with people with that expertise. The leadership position doesn't necessarily have to be the person who's actually doing that. And I think, in my mind, we have a job description that does not require the teaching experience. And if it's okay with the chair, I'd like to go ahead and make the motion that we, unless somebody else has another comment.
Board Member.
I'll get on the floor then.
Thank you, Dr. Schmerle. Board Member Johnson.
Yeah, this is quick and easy. For me, it's the certification aspect. And it has been said tonight that you are pursuing, you have an O-92 and pursuing an O-93, correct?
It's actually, I do have an O-93 and pursuing the O-92.
My apologies. And so, just give me an expected time, do you think you'll complete that? What is a reasonable expectation for that?
I don't know that I have that. It requires some additional coursework, basically. And so I'm working with, you know, applying to enroll in the necessary coursework, but I don't have a date for you.
Okay.
I will say, I mean, so I have the O-93, and that comes through the fact that I'm licensed, I have a professional license as a superintendent, assistant superintendent in Massachusetts, which then translates through the reciprocity to Connecticut.
Okay. Thank you.
The motion on the floor is that Hartford Board of Education approved the superintendent's recommendation to appoint Paul Foster to the position of deputy superintendent. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Nay.
Nay.
Abstentions? The ayes have it, the motion moves.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Item 4.3, contract approval, Connecticut Forum. The motion that Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the Connecticut Forum for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2024 at the cost not to exceed $140,000, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Superintendent?
Yes, the SMSA School Improvement Plan, if, there is an emphasis on improving school climate engagement, chronic absenteeism, and building school, students, family engagement overall. In an attempt to make improvements in those areas, as well as providing the school community with access to high-quality, interactive and engaging content, linking the school and the community as a resource for academic and social supports, SMSA would like to partner with the Connecticut Forum and their youth talks programs. The grant would cover school and community-based events with both small and large group facilitation, with very specific focus on topics like racism, LGBTQ+, stress, violence. And the program includes several events in a series of over two years. So I know that we have representatives here from the forum, but I wanted to clarify that the funding is part of the school, the Scaling Equity Innovation Grant, if you remember, based on feedback from our community, but specifically our school leaders. They wanted to have some autonomy and innovative opportunities to help with our recovery efforts. And so $12 to $14 million were set aside for the Equity Innovation Grants, and SMSA has identified this as one of their investments and innovations.
Thank you. Look towards my colleagues to see if there's any questions or comments. Mr. Walker.
Sure. Hello, Tyron Walker, and I think we talked a bit during the committee hearing. So you talk about the number of events you expect to hold over the two-year period, type of audiences you believe it's going to attract, and potentially how the school will use these programs to engage student attendance or engagement in the school community.
Sure. Joe Banel, the Assistant Principal of SMSA, thank you for your question. The main component that we'll do, that we'll start the process is just the development of the program itself, working with the CT Forum group to outline kind of the areas and needs of SMSA specific to the events we want to hold. We're looking to have anywhere from two to three events in the first year, four to six in the subsequent year, to kind of build the program out in working with that group. The themes and topics that we want to help the students with, we want to get their voice and get their input into the types of programs that they would want to bring to our school. We hope to generate engagement that will build our attendance numbers and improve our chronic absenteeism through building a robust program over time, through a robust discovery phase. The more work we can do with getting student input and staff input and other stakeholder input into the types of topics that they want to kind of break down and improve in to build their capacity, you know, in softer skills, not necessarily academic skills, is really what our focus is over time. So, you know, if you were to look at the list of themes, you know, things like peer pressure, racism, LGBTQ+ and U, stress, violence in our lives, these other types of really prescient issues that the school is hoping, or the students, I'm assuming will identify as areas that they want to learn and grow and develop as a whole child. So the key is going to be some of these smaller group discussions that the Forum has expertise in, that will build out into these larger events that students will have a voice in. And so by using student voice to bring engagement into it, we hope to build these larger events. So really on-the-ground work with the kids that will build this program out over the course of time. One of the benefits of the Forum is that they have expertise in this, they have experience in this, you know, decades with, working with the Youth Forum program. So they know how to do this, they've been doing it for years. We just want to bring that to SMSA. Is that it? I believe that answers.
Yeah, thank you for that response.
Board Member Oliver, you have a question?
Yes. Thank you so much for this. I just have a question, because I'm very, I'm familiar with the Forum and it has a great reputation in the community that does, you know, great high-level talks, I believe, at the Bushnell from time to time. And I guess my question is, and this may sound like a silly question, but it's a question I do want to know. It seems as, will the students have an opportunity to present or will they be talked to during the time in this program?
I want to speak on this. The answer, the short answer to that is yes. The students will have a chance to build leadership within this program and be part of the work here. But if you don't mind, I'd like to let Ruth Cullen speak on the process that the Forum has used in the past to help foster and generate that engagement of the kids to take leadership roles.
Sure.
Thank you for that question. Just taking a step back, the fundamental way the Connecticut Forum operates is to ask the community about the topics they're most interested in, the issues that are most pressing to them. The Connecticut Youth Forum has historically operated exactly the same way in reaching out to the students and asking them for the issues that are most pressing to them, what is on their mind, and letting their input develop the programming, that they are actively involved in creating it, that they have a sense of ownership and can take pride in that programming as well. So for this, for this work that we've proposed together, the first step is to do a discovery phase where we get to understand what the issues are at SMSA for the faculty and certainly for the students. So gathering that input will be a critical first phase to determine the programming that makes the most sense at SMSA. Elevating student voice, ensuring that there's a core group of students involved consistently throughout the two years of this, of this program will be, has proven to be transformative for tens of thousands of high school students in and around Hartford for the past 30 years. We see that, we're very excited about the possibility of working together in this way to customize programming and use that as a model potentially for other schools within the Hartford Public School District.
Appreciate it. You know, for me, the Forum has been something that is like truly high-level and a lot of my friends from the suburbs come in and hear a really, really great conversation. And I, you know, I guess where I'm struggling at and what I want to hear you say is, how are you going to communicate with and level set with our young people around these already hard issues? I don't know how else plainer to say it, but I just, I need to hear that because, again, the Forum is something that I deeply appreciate, but what I know from its audience, it brings in a particular audience to listen on issues, right? And when we speak of our kids, our students at our school, they're coming from various different viewpoints, and I'm just, I want to make sure that the people we put before them have a clear understanding of who they are and how to get the best out of them to do what we need to do.
Yes. I'm going to let Joe speak, and then I may add on.
Over the summer, when we were looking for ways of taking the Innovation Grant funding and bringing programs to our students at SMSA, I reached out to the Forum because I've known about their youth work, I've gone to their Forum events, I know the type of work that you're speaking of. SMSA being a magnet school, we draw from multiple districts across the greater Hartford area. They've been drawing from districts across the greater Hartford area as well. But the primary reason I reached out was the Youth Forum that they do, their number one goal is to get kids engaged in this level of work. Yes, I know a lot of this proposal speaks to these two to four or three to six events, but really the main benefit is the groundwork to get those events going, and that's through working with the kids directly over the course of the time of this contract. So that's the only reason I even reached out to them, is because I know they've done good work with kids for an extended amount of time. My vision for it and in the proposal, and then in talking with Ruth over the course of the summer and in the fall in proposing this grant, was how do we get the kids as much involved in this process as possible? How do we get the kids as many leadership chances as possible through those small group discussions? The events are just a byproduct of that work. And the event speakers and facilitators are a byproduct of what the kids need and want to see. So those are kind of more culminating type of actions. The day-to-day work with the students, the small group discussions with the students to get to those events is hopefully led primarily by students and staff together working collaboratively.
I do have one question, and it's very just direct. What does success look like?
Well, I mean, we've outlined chronic absenteeism rates reducing. We've outlined increases in parent and community and student engagement. Secondary byproducts would be looking over grades of those students that are involved, looking at overall engagement in other areas. Are they joining other clubs? Are they getting involved in other parts of the school? Are their disciplinary records improving if they have disciplinary issues? So we're, you know, that, those are kind of more of the secondary. But in terms of connecting it back to our school particular, our School Improvement Plan and the goals of the district, it's really looking at chronic absenteeism, average daily attendance, getting kids engaged, getting families to feel like they're engaged in our community, they are safe in our school, they are safe in our community. And we have tracking data already in place for that. It would be really an extension of looking at that data down the line in response to some of these programs.
Thank you. Are there any additional questions? Board Member Brody.
So looking at some of the topics, could you speak a little bit to cultural competency, both of your staff and maybe in the curriculum as it relates to how you're, how you would deliver in engagement with students? But, because like one of them that sticks out to me, violence in our lives. Violence in our lives can look much different to the children of Hartford as we all have seen on the news.
Correct? No, please.
Thank you for your question. I'd like to make the distinction between the Connecticut Forum events that are held at the Bushnell Theater on a large platform with world-renowned speakers, and the work that we have done in Hartford and greater Hartford for 30 years with high school students, bringing high school students together from different towns to talk about issues that they have identified as important to them, putting 300 diverse students in a room and establishing a culture of validation and respect and in small and large group activities diving in. So the work in the theater is very different than this hands-on work with youth. We have 30 years of curriculum, lesson plans developed that can be used to customize further. Violence in Our Lives was a special program that was delivered to select schools in Hartford over the last 10 years. over the last 10 years and many, many other topics there. These are just a sampling of the topics that have, the youth forum has addressed through the years.
If I may add, I do want to say that the reason, again, that I reached out to the forum is there, that there is that distinct difference between forum events and the youth work that they do. Primarily the work that they've done with youth, the youth is in the Hartford School District primarily.
Board member Smurling.
I appreciate tying the program with, with tracking and evidence. So two questions. One, historically with the 30 years of work that you've done, have we been tracking impact? And if so, can that be shared? And then secondly, if this gets approved, assuming it will get approved, at some interval, coming back to this board and sharing that, are we moving the needle? Are we, are we having the impact, the three or four measures that you just mentioned so that we can kind of track this as we go along?
Just that second question and then let Ms. Cullen speak on the first. I would love to have a PowerPoint like some of you showed with pictures of events and kids at work with these topics, you know, that would be, that would be wonderful.
And thank you for your question. Yes, we have collected data through the years to measure the impact of our programming and I'm happy to share some of the most recent data that we have regarding the impact and the reach of our youth programming, specific to its, its effect on academic performance, its, its impact on student assessment of improvement of their levels of confidence, students' feelings of connectedness, students' feelings of their health and well-being, including mental health. So I'm happy to share some of that data with you if that would be helpful in making a decision.
I think one of our highest priorities is the attendance and so reducing absenteeism. And so whether that's been tracked, if it has been tracked, it'd be nice to see your historical, if not certainly to include that as part of the metric going forward.
Any additional questions or comments? Before we take the vote, I do want to echo my colleague, Board member Smurling, in terms of providing the board with some metrics in terms of the engagement over the past X amount of years and then more importantly, I think it will serve us well to have a checkpoint as you sound like you was in approval or at least aligned with to come back and check in with us to show the impact if this moves forward. So with that being said, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with the Connecticut Forum for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2024 at the cost not to exceed $140,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, the motion moves.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Item 4.4, contract approval, Ready CT. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Ready CT for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2024 at the cost not to exceed $207,426. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, I know that Ready CT has been before us. I know Shannon Morman is here. So just for a quick overview, Ready CT does offer expertise in work-based learning and K-12 career pathways and has significant ties to both the education and business communities throughout our county and they're uniquely positioned to provide work-based learning coordination and general work-based learning guidance and expertise at Great Path Academy. I know that Dr. Fitzgerald is here as well from our principal at Great Path. Specifically, this partnership will help increase the number of resident students taking part in work-based learning opportunities such as guest speaker series, job shadowing, internship, college readiness, workshop programming, industry-recognized credentials and dual enrollment courses. The fact that Great Path is on the MCC campus provides, you know, some of the conditions that are necessary for this to, to all work. However, you know, having someone, a dedicated coordinator will promote the learning and the opportunities for those career-themed instructional opportunities. And so also a reminder that the funding is part of the Equity Innovation Grant as well.
Thank you. Do you have any comments or questions for my colleagues? Board member Oliver.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. Excited to see our partners as always, I guess Ready CT and Principal. I'm actually really excited about this. We have been talking about what has felt as if it is a, I wouldn't go as far as saying a missed opportunity at the MCC campus, but definitely not our ability to maximize that opportunity for students. And as we continue our work collectively in education, knowing the importance of economic and social mobility in particular, it's, it's a disservice to our students and families when we're not able to take advantage of those. So creating multiple pathways, taking advantage of those opportunities, it's just so critical. And so I'm very supportive of this. I know that there has been a lot of work, obviously, Ready CT relating a lot of our work in terms of the NAF academies and the Pathways and all of the great stuff we're doing in our high schools, but for us to be able to put together that model that allows those pathways to go into our post-secondary and just strengthen really the pathway, because I think there is something there, it's just, again, we need to strengthen it. I'm extremely supportive and I, I feel pretty confident that you'll be able to do some really great work. So again, you're hearing me say I am fully supporting this contract and really also what lessons we learn in that process, knowing that this is somewhat still new, even though we've been, Great Path has been there for some time. So thank you for this and putting this in front of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board member Oliver. Any additional questions?
I have a follow-up from committee.
Board member, Board member Brody, apologies.
No, it's okay. I, it was some, if you remember, it was some things I had kind of wanted to be called out in particular. So the conversation sort of led to the emphasis on the Hartford students and making sure that they are represented and like a focus on them to actually take advantage of a lot of the great things that was described to us in committee. I didn't leave committee, like it wasn't definite, time ran out sort of, but I'm trying to just make sure that we are really having a focus on all students, but it came up with Hartford students because the numbers aren't, their experience, their exposure is just very different from a suburban student. So if you could just speak to that a little bit on what we want to do.
Absolutely, and good evening, everyone, to the members of the board. I'm Dr. Jessica Fitzgerald, I'm the principal of Great Path Academy. So again, it's nice to meet all of you and make your acquaintance. I absolutely appreciate your follow-up from that committee. You know, I left that committee meeting continuing to think about that question and it's really just been my passion to, again, make sure that our students, especially in our magnet schools, where at Great Path, we have 50% Hartford, 50% suburban, and we're still continuing to work on getting our Hartford numbers up in that enrollment. And it's, it's a critical point for all the magnet schools to make sure that those, those opportunities that the magnet schools afford are equitable for all of our students. And that's why I highlighted that in the committee, because doing this work is for, of course, for all students, but particularly for those resident students that we have in Hartford who are now making the choice to come to a magnet school, making the choice to leave their city, right, and travel to Manchester and believe me, you know, some of them take a very long, difficult ride. Sometimes their buses arrive late, they don't get till, they're till 7:45, 8 o'clock, those buses end late. So all that to say, right? I mean, the parents and the families are making a commitment, especially to that school, and we have to serve that purpose. So again, so my follow-up to that is we're going to track specifically the amount of students that we're engaging in the program with Ready CT for all of the different career opportunities that we do for mock interviews, resume writing, workshop building, seminars, career opportunities, and we're certainly tracking the amount of students that we're working on internship placements with, how many of them are from Hartford and how many of them are, you know, outside of Hartford and what that looks like. And I did, I did have experience with doing that when I was at Pathways formerly. We had a really strong emphasis on the same thing that I've certainly carried with me and I think it's just a pivotal point for all the magnet schools to make sure that they're aware, because that, that is our charge to really, again, make sure that we are providing those equitable experiences.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Ready CT for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2024 at a cost not to exceed $2,7426. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it, motion moves. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 4.5, contract approval, Unbound Ed. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Unbound Ed for the term outlined in the contract ending June 30th of 2023 at a cost not to exceed $100,000. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Superintendent?
Yes, Unbound Ed is a leading, one of the nation's leading high-quality equity-focused professional learning providers. They specialize in grade-level engaging of permanent meaningful instructional framework. It's designed to help educators understand the power of grade-level instruction while also scaffolding or implementing supports in instruction and infusing cultural responsiveness, responsive teaching to improve equitable access to grade-level instruction for all students. And we have participated in Unbound Ed training back in August of 2022 and some of the participants have confirmed that it is a valued, incredible professional learning partner. And we have here Principal Webely and Dr. Crawford, principal of Martin King Middle, because these two schools seek to collaborate in bringing Unbound Ed's, their two-day professional learning locally and equipping approximately about 100 teachers in the same, in the same feeder pattern. And so we think about students that are, for example, at the middle school that will ultimately transition to here, to Weaver High School, and the training schedule will allow for teachers at, at both schools to access the professional learning. This aligns to our current focus on high-quality teaching and learning and our priority and the teachers will have, will leave the experience better prepared to do a couple of things. One, there will be an understanding of not just the purpose, but the power of teaching grade-level standards. Two, developing an equity lens when deciding on their day-to-day teaching moves and addressing the roles that race, bias and prejudice play in the instructional process.
Thank you. Board member Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello again. So you, you came before me in committee and allowed this to be elevated here, and so I'm going to say it's here. I want to state though, that I want to discuss this more here because to me, I have questions about the cost here. It's $100,000 for a two-day training for 100 teachers, expensive per teacher and I, the value of the scaffolding, all that infrastructure that's been built out, I'm questioning how does two days really provide the time for processing, processing to take place and how people will be leaving with real tools, are they going to go make some impactful change? And so what, what I'm thinking needs to be heard is how this has happened in this training? What's been the experience in the past that, that can show that other districts have had impact that kind of merit this training? And, and I'm not getting, I'm not getting at the training. The training probably is valuable in terms of these topics, but what I've heard, I've talked to some teachers, is that, hey, I've had some of this before, I've had some of this in some other venue, some other place. And so this, so I'm wondering, given that, how is this going to be, you know, how's that impact going to be established and how is that $100,000 really going to be delivered in, in the impactful way here in this district?
Would you like to answer the question?
We do have Unbound Ed personnel, so I was waiting for that person to respond before I did.
I am here, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for that question. For, for those who have been a part of the district and been a part of Unbound Ed in, in the past, through our Standards Institute, which is our standard or signature PD experience, a full five-day PD experience, that's, that's what we're most notably known for, is that full five days time and opportunity to do the learning and do what you're saying in terms of having the time to practice and reflect and apply the learning to, to what's necessary back at their, at the participants' home schools. We have not yet had one of those five-day experiences in the northeast of the country. And so what we've done to help support the active interest that has come from Hartford is to bring a two-day snippet of that locally so that we can begin the process of, of educating and empowering Hartford teachers and, and leaders about the power of equity, about the power of standards and how making standards available to all students of, literally all students, no matter their race, their zip code, their socioeconomic status, as the great equalizer. So if teachers, no matter their color or background or experience or perceptions, have that toolset, that skillset for how to hold standards high for everybody, how to scaffold and support and bring up everyone's learning so that everyone's achieving, achieving a grade-level standards, that is what we are going to introduce to teachers and educators in Hartford over those two days. It by no means is the entire change process. It, it by no means ends there. It is the beginning of an ongoing process where we will continue as, as was previously stated, we started this back in August. People saw a need to continue this journey, to continue this learning journey, and so we're bringing the next experience so we can continue as, as desired and also work with the district curriculum and instructional people to help bring our framework into the planning for the district on a larger scale so, so that it doesn't just end there after the two days, so that it is indeed part of a longer, ongoing, sustainable journey of learning for, for the entire system.
Thank you for that response. You've gotten at kind of what I was thinking. It feels like it should be a longer program and something that's more involved, so I didn't get that at the committee, so maybe we can talk here about if this is just the beginning, what's the vision of how this is really going to be rolled out so we really get the impact that we think is, is possible?
The vision, I, I'm sorry, I'm not hearing you completely. Did you, did you ask, is your question about the vision of the two-day experience exclusively?
I, I apologize, this is Taber Walker in the, in the room. I think your colleague in front of me may have been wanting to make a comment.
Okay, Michelle, I will speak a little bit towards that. So what the plan is for our two-day summit is to So what the plan is for our two-day summit is to include all the middle schools. So I've reached out to the other middle schools in Hartford to invite them to send in their teachers and their certified staff to be a part of this venture so that we will have more impact. So also, I know that we are going to be having at least two lead people for each of the, each of the sessions that we are going to be having. We are going to be having for ELA, math, and also leadership. And this is very, very important in Hartford, especially for our North End students, since I know at Martin Luther King School, we have over 99% of our students who are minority students, they are African-American students, or they are Hispanic or Latino. And this is going to be really, really important because our teachers who are teaching our students need to know where it all started, where culturally relevant instruction actually started so that they can start to formulate and build the instruction around these ideas to make sure that it's having the greatest impact on our students.
Ms. Walker, I just wanted to add that the vision started in August when the school leaders, both assistant principals and principals, participated in Unbound Ed for a two-day workshop as well, where they really began to unpack standards and the work around equity to support all of our students in this work. And so during this time, if you think about, that happened in August, having the school leaders actually implementing the things that they have learned, and now we have middle school and high school feeder schools wanting to then give that to their teachers and having a two-day with about six facilitators that will participate from Unbound Ed so that they can work with the teachers directly in smaller groups with their focused expertise in those areas that Dr. Crawford mentioned. So this is just the beginning, and if you think about year two, so we'll have this time for this two-day training, we'll have the opportunity for teachers to begin to implement the strategies that they will learn from Unbound Ed and with conversations with Unbound Ed from the school leaders and the teachers, then the next level will be developed of what the need is and the impact that has happened.
Thank you. I guess my final comment, I guess, of Ms., apologies, apologies, is my, my comment in committee was about tracking impact, coming back with metrics and some results, and so I would say the same here. This is one where I really want to have an eye towards that because I was anticipating that this would be something that in years moving forward, we'll probably have to pay for Phase Two or Phase Three, and I just want to be sure that we're getting our impact so it would justify the Phase Two or Phase Three that really, I think, this program probably deserves at some point. So that's the end of my comments.
So I just want to lift at this time that for all of the SEIG grants and all of the schools, we have already begun the process by having school leaders have professional learning committees that happened this past week, last week, to really begin to talk about systems and monitoring the return of investment, to really look at the data and the supports that are given by the grants and what has been the impact. And so we have started that process already, and there will be data and reports that will be shared to, to show the impact of all of the SEIG grants.
Thank you very much. Any additional questions? Board Member Ledger?
Thank you so much and good evening. I just wanted to say, as an educator, as a Black educator, I really can appreciate this particular professional development because in, you know, looking at what the participants will take away from this professional development, one thing that I'm looking at is addressing the roles that race, bias, and prejudice play in schools and also developing an equity lens when deciding daily teaching practices. Oftentimes, students who are not able to relate and not able to connect to the curriculum, the, a lot of times, the reason is because there's no equity, there's no cultural competency. And it, it looks like this is a critical piece that will bring that to the teachers, bring that to the students, and this looks like a meaningful, a meaningful opportunity for teachers to take advantage of cultural competency where they can apply this to their, their teaching. I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Board Member Ledger. Any other comments or questions from my colleagues? Board Member Brody?
So, good evening. So usually when we get contracts, we get like a budget, like the previous contract. So do we know like how much staff we're getting for this and are they providing materials, like a breakdown? I don't see anything other than, and I'm not saying this is something you would provide. I'm saying for our, our staff, it's just vague dollar amounts and it gives some of the titles, but it doesn't say like who, the team that's coming, how much is for staff, how much is for other things. I don't know who would speak to that.
Michelle, can you?
I can speak to that. And, and yes, both principals involved in this particular two-day experience have those details, but for your quick understanding, the summary of those include, the two days will be broken up into different or specific learning pathways covering the content that those teachers specialize in. So that's not a generic training, it's going to be focused and, and specific to the, to their disciplines, and for each discipline, we're sending in two facilitators to facilitate the learning in that group. So for the ELA and the math and the leadership that Ms. Crawford mentioned, there are a total of six people coming in to deliver training across those two days. We're providing all of the materials for everyone. We're providing a registration site where everybody can let us know or indicate which pathway they're choosing ahead of time. We're providing a survey before and after so we can give you some data about the, the participants' perceptions and, and views of what they're seeing and experiencing and how they can expect to apply and use the information. And so those are the, the costs that go into that $100,000.
Thank you. I just, it, just not to you, but as a reminder that those things, if we could get them beforehand, not from you, is not your responsibility. I'm not speaking to you, but for our staff when it's presented. Thank you.
Any additional questions? Because I do have a question for Ms. McCastle. I think my colleague, Board Member Walker, asked about kind of what I think was alluding to, like sustainability, right? Kind of what happens next? And if I understand correctly, this is a snippet of a, typically a five-day programming. What I'm trying to get is the idea of the, of your core structure. So if this is, let's call it $1,000 per teacher over two days, if we were to have this conversation again in X amount of time and we're looking at a five-day, what, like what's the, I guess, expected cost that we should have in mind if we're thinking about sustainability and a much kind of forward-facing vision of what we want in terms of equity?
So, so the signature five-day experience that I mentioned is not delivered schools specifically. It happens generally in three different locations around the country. This year in 2023, for example, it'll be in Anaheim, California in February, it'll be in Denver, Colorado in June, and Washington DC in July. So we, we, that's, that's our signature experience that people travel to. The cost is $3,000 per person, and, and that applies to anyone and everyone in the school system wanting to learn about this crossroads between standards and, and equity and how to hold standards high and make them attainable and accessible for every, every student. So what we're doing for Hartford is a custom situation where we're, because, because that would cost even more if we took the five-day and brought it to Hartford. But what we want to do is give them access to the opportunity to learn, to be introduced to the concepts, to speak the same language, to begin to have the mindset shifts and think about what all students are capable of and how to, how to give them the skills and the tools to empower all students. So while it's, you know, seemingly short, it's a powerful introduction and orientation to these concepts that, that are going to maybe cause some to have to think different. And this is, as you know, you know, change is a process. So we want to help ignite that process with, with these powerful learnings and conversations about race and discrimination, and then sit down with your district leaders to plan the subsequent next steps. Hopefully, there will be a time where there, where more Hartford educators and leaders can come to our full five-day Standards Institute and be part of that think tank who's designing what this looks like for Hartford. But in the meantime, I'm going to be connecting your, your schools that are participating in this process with our content people to put our heads together and help you start strategizing, and that's without cost. We, we want to be your partners on an ongoing basis, and so the cost, you know, the, the majority of the cost that we're talking about so far has to do with flying in our facilitators and the travel and the materials and the, and the PD experience itself. But in between time, we are going to be brainstorming and helping to create a PD plan that, that lasts two or three or five years, depending on what is desired, so that you have a concrete plan on paper to think about and plan subsequent steps as needed.
Appreciate that, and I guess the follow-up to that is, you mentioned that this is a custom or a specialized program that's happening for Hartford Public Schools. Have you deployed this program in other districts?
Yes. So, so this is common because, because we're, our signature experience only happens three times a year in specific locations, it's not accessible easily for everybody, and so this two-day summit is, is an offering that we make available wherever people are willing to, you know, invest in it. So it's something that has happened just in August in Hartford, and it's happened in other places around the country too. In Malden Public Schools is a really popular place, for example, that uses this two-day model very frequently to keep new teachers, either new hires or new, or teachers new to the district, aware and, and, and involved and invested in, in this mindset, in this skill set, in this tool set. And so it's not a new offering or, or something that we haven't done before. This is a regular offering that we make available. When I say it's customized, it's because we are meeting with your Hartford people to understand the needs and the language of the, of the district, to make it applicable to your plans and goals so that it's more of a seamless, aligned PD and not just something else on the plate.
Thank you. Board Member Ledger?
Thank you. One question I have is, after this summit takes place with Hartford Public Schools, say a month or two months down the road, will educators or participants of this summit have access to any of the members of your leadership team if they have questions or if they?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely. Yes. As I mentioned, that's part of the ongoing planning and designing that we are going to be available to do with the leaders of the district and leaders of the schools in particular, to make sure that this is indeed an ongoing process. We want to give them the tool, the powerful learning for everyone on those two days, but we also want to give your leaders the powerful tools to manage the process of what's expected afterwards, to manage it, to monitor it, to, to measure it, to sustain it and support it so that it, so that it does be, so that it does stick.
And this is included in the $100,000?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. The motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to execute a contract with Unbound Ed for the term outlined in the contract and then June 30th for 2023 at the cost not to exceed $100,000. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Item 4.6, second reading. Several policies, 5144.1, 5144.2, 3524.1, 1324. Motion that the Hartford Board of Education adopts the following policies: Use of Physical Force, 5144.1, Physical Restraint, Secclusion, and the Use of Ex- Exclusionary Timeout, 5144.12, Pesticide Applications, 3524.1, Soliciting Funds From and By Students, 13.2, 1324. Do I have a motion?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Vice Chair Johnson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, I just want to give a shout out to all of the parents and all of the organizations that help us craft this policy. I always give a shout out to our staff and our board members that get on early calls, but I want to give a shout out to the parents who also put in input on a lot of our policies. I don't want to forget them because they are the most important piece to this. So we have item one, second reading, Use of Physical Force. This policy adopted in 1999 with the language revisions in 2005. Since this time, Connecticut law has evolved to address conditions pertaining to the use of physical restraint and/or seclusion. Revisions address required training and prevention training. Use of Exclusionary Timeout appears in more detail in Policy 5144.2. The language in the policy has been revived, revised to reflect current definitions and appropriateness of specific strategies to ensure student safety. Item number two, for second reading, Physical Restraint, Secclusion, and Use of Exclusionary Timeout. Policy was adopted in 2011 with revisions in 2016 and 2019. Since this time, Connecticut law has grown to address settings appropriate for the use of exclusionary timeout. Updated definitions and appropriate specific strategies to ensure student safety have been revised in alignment with statute and best practice. Item number three, second reading of Pesticide Applications. K-Policy Audit identified this as a mandated policy missing from our policy manual. While we have followed legal requirements with any and all use of pesticides, this policy formalizes existing practices. Item number four, second reading, Soliciting Funds From and By Students. As K-Best Practice, the district will benefit from a clear policy to guide soliciting funds by students. Item number five, this is for first reading, but I'm going to stop here unless we want to move, is?
We have to take a vote for a second. Thank you. Any discussions, comments? Board Member Oliver?
Thank you. My question is in regards to the soliciting funds from and by students, and it seems as if this is a K-Best Practice, the way it's set up. As many of you may have, I was very involved as a student with fundraising, thousands of dollars for scholarships, et cetera. with fundraising, thousands of dollars for scholarships, et cetera. And over the years, even after I graduated, there were questions about what happened to that money. Inside the policy, it mentions the stays in the Student Activity Fund, but it does not go on beyond that, which in general, I'm okay with policies not going all the way into that level of detail. So in other words, what happens at the end of the year when the money is still sitting there? Does it roll to the next year? Who is actually making decisions on how that money is spent? Is it a student body? Is it? So I'm saying this in terms of understanding that this is perhaps a starting point, something that we haven't had formally because, again, there have been questions in the past, especially as related to, I'm just going to give a specific example here. We used to have the snack bar here at Weaver as part of Future Business Leaders of America. We would raise $20,000 a year and give out most of that money to scholarships, which we were proud of as students. That money wasn't all used up on purpose because of business, you need a reserve. So I guess what I'm just saying is I want to share with my colleagues that there's some unanswered questions here, which I'm okay with. But I do think whether it's in the regulations or what have you, that something should be speaking to these other pieces of if money's left in these activity. You guys get where I'm going with this. So I just wanted to bring that one up. The other one is I appreciate the work that the committee and others have done in terms of discipline and really trying to clarify those pieces. I know in particular, especially with all of our children, definitely there's been questions with younger children, not always at Hartford Public Schools, of when you're trying to restrain a child because they're going to hurt themselves or another student in particular. So I appreciate trying to bring more clarity to the policy and the work that's been done by this group. Thank you.
I guess Vice Chair Johnson or Dr. Silver, can you address, I guess, the first half of Board Member Walker's, I mean, sorry, Board Member Oliver's question slash comment?
Good evening. Thank you so much for that question. We will have, this is a new policy for us and we will have administrative regulations that detail the actions that we can take with those funds and the protocols to follow.
Thank you, Dr. Silver. Thank you.
Are there additional questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, the motion on the floor is that the Hartford Board of Education adopts the policies listed. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any nays, abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Thank you. Item 4.7, first reading, policy 5141.3, student welfare. Vice Chair Johnson?
First reading, student welfare. Student well-being is of paramount importance to the Hartford Public Schools. Engagement in classroom and other school activities is promoted and encouraged by district staff. The appropriate healthcare person will be summoned if any student is asleep, lethargic, or otherwise, non-responsive during any class or other activity. That is the spirit of this policy. This is a first reading and I'm sure Dr. Silver can go into more elaboration of how we got to this policy if needed.
Dr. Silver, is anything that you'd like to add? If not, it's perfectly fine. Nope. Thank you. Any discussions or comments as it relates to the policy? Seeing none, as this is the first reading, no vote is required at this time. Thank you. Item six, sorry, item five, apologies. Executive session, we'll be going into executive session to discuss potential lease for the board space. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Nays? Any abstentions? The ayes have it. The motion moves. Will be taken with us into executive session Superintendent Torres Rodriguez, Chief Davis, Gooch, Attorney Lori Miseryk, and Chief Phil Penn. Thank you.